Open the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council Redevelopment Succession Team, Clear Lake City Hall, Council Changers, 14050 Olympic Drive, Clear Lake. Rule of call, please.
Councilmember Perdok.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sluton.
Present.
And Mayor Kramer is absent.
First, I want to have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please they stand in place and then also member Perdok will give a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Our dear heavenly Father, we ask that your spirit would be with us tonight. We are so grateful for all that you do and all that you are in our lives and how you bring us here to this place and space that we may work for the good of the city of Clear Lake and also the folks here in the county of Lake. We come together as neighbors and friends as a community. We ask that you lead and guide this council that we may make wise decisions that will help our community. We ask that you be with those who weren't able to be at this meeting tonight and lift all those others who need your spirit to be with them. And we give you all the love and the grace through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knows the rules here. All items on the agenda will be open for public comment before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the regular public hearing on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the city clerk prior to the meeting of day. So that material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within the three minute timeline. Mayor has discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item as a courtesy to others. Please turn off your cell phone and any other distracting devices. Adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes to agenda?
There will be no need for a closed session item tonight because we would pull that one.
Presentation by Clear Lake Animal Control. Do we have a, can I have a motion to accept the agenda? Any, any changes the public wants to agenda? Not?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda, yes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Presentation by Clear Lake Animal Control as a January adoptible dog. There we have one.
This is King. King is approximately five years old. He is an American Specter Shire Terrier. He is neutered, up to date on all of his shots. He is also microchipped. He is very patient. One of the nice things about him, he actually just sat in the truck for about forty-five minutes out there in the parking lot. He didn't complain once. He's also very good on a leash. He, I had him on what we call a long lead earlier. It's about ten feet long and even with that, he stayed right next to me the entire time. And when I would stop, he would stop. And when I would start walking, he would go again. So he's very intelligent. He's very affectionate. We got him back in October. He was surrendered to us. His owners were moving and couldn't take them, couldn't take him with them. Adoption fee is a hundred and fifteen dollars. That includes him already being neutered the first year of the license and the microchip.
Can you tell us where we, if anybody is interested, where?
Yes, anyone that's interested, they can inquire directly at the shelter, sixty-eight twenty Old Highway fifty-three. They can also call down there if they're interested to see him. The shelter phone number is two-seven-three-nine-four-four-zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening. We're off to a pretty fast start this year. We've taken a lot of dogs and so far, we've taken fifty-three dogs into the shelter. So it's quite a large amount for being twenty-three days in the year. Of those fifty-three, thirty-four have gone to rescues, eight have been returned to their owners, ten have been adopted, and one has been euthanized. So the live release rate is pretty good around about ninety-eight percent. So hopefully, if that stays up high and the amount coming in goes down. You can't bring that many in every three weeks.
Okay, this is the time for any member of the public to address the city council or any matter that is not on the agenda, that is, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Please complete a speaker information card and present it to the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The Brown Act, with limited exception, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on any non-agenda item. Concerns may be referred to staff and placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments in the public also will be taken on, taken on each agenda item when that item comes up. And comments, again, so we're limited to three minutes per person. Do we have anybody in the public that wants to address the council? If not, we'll move on to the consent. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda? Anybody in the public that wants to address the consent item, items as listed? If not, bring it back to the council. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. First item of business, first reading of ordinance two-thirty-six dash twenty-twenty, clarifying correct ordinance number two-two-two dash two thousand nineteen related to issuance handling appeals and penalties of administrative citations. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So Administrative Services Director Swanson will provide the step forward to the council.
Honorable Mayor and honorable Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Ordinance two-twenty-two dash twenty nineteen related to the issuance handling appeals and penalties of administrative citations was adopted in February of twenty nineteen. While we were codifying the ordinance, a typo was discovered in section one dash nine-point-seven E-one-B, which referenced a non-existent subsection. A copy of the page with the errors provided to you on the dais. It is necessary to adopt a new ordinance stating the correct subsection, which is one dash nine-point-six. Staff is recommending holding the first reading of the ordinance by title only, waiting for the reading, and setting the second reading and adoption for the next council meeting. Fairly straightforward.
Okay, well, over the public hearing, anybody has comments on this item? If not, we'll look back to the council. Does the council need comment? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion. Make the motion that we accept ordinance number two-three-six dash twenty nineteen, read it by tunnel only. Ordinance, an ordinance clarifying and correcting ordinance number two-two-two dash twenty nineteen, and ordinance amending chapter one, ten, and eighteen of the Clear Lake Municipal Code related to the insurance handling of appeals and penalties of administration citation. Amending the general permits, penalties for violations, adjusting penalties for cannabis-related violations, and providing for immediate imposition of fines in specified circumstances and wait the second reading and set the date for February sixth, twenty twenty. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Not? This required, or call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. Item number ten, state update on Hope Center project and provide direction and city funding support. Our city, Lake County, will provide some clarification.
Yeah, so Councilmember Perdok requested this item be added to the agenda at our last council meeting. And so we have representatives of the Hope Center here, but perhaps Councilmember Perdok wants to provide a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Vice Mayor. Thank you very much for adding this to the agenda item and that we could hear it tonight. And at this point, I would like each of the members that are here to speak to share their vision for Hope Center and reasons why we need it, and I ask that it be supported, and then I can make comments after.
Any presentation by a applicant? There's really no application, just not, but please introduce yourself and see what you can do.
So here tonight, thank you, here tonight is Pastor Shannon Kimbeloff and our, the executive director for Hope Rising, Allison. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Hello. So thanks for letting us be here today. We really just wanted to talk to you about Hope Center and the progress where we are and how hopefully you can help to be a part of a solution. So Hope Rising Lake County is a coalition of agencies aligned to leverage our resources and services and to break down silos, to collectively come together and, and support our community wholeheartedly. We, some of the agencies that you see here down at the bottom of this slide are a part of Hope Rising's board. This year, we were tasked with facilitating the community health needs assessment. It's assessment done every three years. And in that assessment, we identified Lake County's significant health needs as getting access to health services, alcoholism, drug use, housing stability and homelessness, mental health, poverty, unemployment. We identified our priorities this year with our community members and nineteen agencies as substance use disorders, housing and homelessness, cancer screens and prevention, and community engagement and outreach. Cancer, housing and homelessness was also identified in the two thousand sixteen community health needs assessment as well, so I just wanted to point that out. We also did a root cause analysis on some of the large barriers that plague our community members, and we linked it all back to poverty of our community. So a little over two years ago, Hope Rising and Adventist Health were granted a grant through Partnership Health Plan, awarding us one-point-three million dollars to open up a transitional housing unit. In this transitional housing unit, we will provide wraparound care and services to our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Adventist Health Clear Lake was able to purchase the property on thirty-four, in the building on thirty-four hundred Emerson Drive, where since that day, we've been eagerly awaiting to open this building to serve our community. However, as you all know, in the last few years, we've been bombarded by fire and disaster after fire and disaster, which has set us back and really changed the initial amount that it would cost to get Hope Center open. Initially, we had an estimate done when we had acquired Hope Center that the remodel would cost five-hundred thousand dollars. This funding was allowed within our grant, and we thought we were good to go. As time has gone on and fire has come and floods have come, the opportunity for contractors has changed and the availabilities has, the contractors has sharply changed, as we all know. And this has really put us in a situation where that no longer is our current state. Do you want to kick it off to?
Yeah, sure. One of the things that I like to remind us is we're talking about particularly homeless intervention, is that we want to be looking at the entire continuum of intervention. So what we've discovered from the fires, certainly Rocky and Jerusalem, but even here in Clear Lake with the Sulfur Fire, there are people that are still unhoused from each of those fires. If you drive into Santa Rosa, as we did when we were visiting the tiny home veterans village in Santa Rosa, there's construction everywhere that there is not construction complete, but there are, there is more construction complete. The barriers that we have faced to housing have been incredible, and you know that, so I don't need to emphasize that. But what I want, I do want to emphasize is that as we're looking at programs, you've got the next slide, I don't want to do that. And as we are looking at the homeless interventions, we want to keep in mind that there is no one right solution. We're not trying to tell you that Hope Center is the only piece of the pie. So we are looking at everything from emergency shelters to homeownership. And if you look at homeownership, you will see that your zip code in Lake County has a significant impact about whether or not you are likely to own your home. On the chart that we're showing you here, Clear Lake's homeownership is the lowest of those. Now, if we'd added Glen Haven, they would have taken that honor, but there are significantly more people that live in Clear Lake, so I think that that's the more relevant data. As we're working with our clients, we're not trying to funnel them into shelters. We're trying to funnel them into the right, long-term, sustainable intervention for them. At Project Restoration, for example, we had one client come in who was experiencing homelessness when she began a client of Project Restoration, and when she moved out, she was a homeowner in Clear Lake. So we want to keep homeownership and tax revenue and supporting the community and sustainability as part of that overall conversation. Homeownership isn't going to be for everybody, but it will be for some, and it has been for some of the people that we are working with. Now, other clients we know are going to be looking for rental units. And again, it's an entire continuum. The work that we're able to do when we provide intensive one-on-one counseling, as we will be doing at Hope Center, will help us to identify that right intervention. Do we need to be preparing somebody to go into low-income housing? Can they go at fair market value housing? We're looking at that entire breadth, recognizing that the goal is that no person be forced to pay more than thirty percent of their income toward their housing cost. We know, however, that if you are receiving social security and your monthly income on your disability is nine-hundred dollars a month, that means that in this perfect budget, you have only thirty percent, three-hundred dollars. Right now, it is impossible to find a room, let alone an apartment, for three-hundred dollars a month. So it, so part of the work of Hope Rising and Hope Center, again, is looking at that entire continuum and many different interventions, Hope Center being just one of them. To look at a little bit more in depth in terms of what homelessness is, two years ago, in two thousand and, January two thousand and eighteen, the PIT count identified, interviewed six-hundred-and-twelve people experiencing homelessness in Lake County. People said, some people said, that number is high. But because we work in the health industry and Partnership Health Plan is one of the partners with Hope Rising, we have access to data beyond that of the PIT count. And what we know is that in two thousand and nineteen, from January to November, so not even a complete year, in two thousand and nineteen, from January to November, we had three-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy unique patients identified as experiencing homelessness, sleeping in an abandoned home, in their car, or wherever they could find shelter. Of those three-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy, one out of five is a child under the age of eighteen. You might think, why are you bringing up specifically children as you talk about Hope Center? Because Hope Center is not going to be housing children. But one part of this wraparound service is family reunification. So some of our clients, the work that they will be doing, it's not just about getting off the street and finding shelter. It's, all right, you have a child in the foster care system. Is it appropriate for that child to be returned to you? What are the steps that you need to take before that child can be returned to you? And this, this model of wraparound housing and social determinants of health is working in many models in many communities. It's one of the best practices that we've seen. Right now, we're following this model within the warming center in Lakeport. We have a client, for example, who Monday through Friday, when the warming center is open, he comes and he sleeps at the shelter. But one of our Hope Rising partners is North Coast Opportunities. They house him in a hotel on the weekends so that he is able to have visitation rights with his child. So it's, again, it's not only about this one specific, specific intervention, but the many ways that we are able to access resources and to connect them to come back into what are truly sustainable models of life. Hope Center in particular, now that I've talked about those sort of broader things, our vision is really to impact poverty in Lake County. And it's not a pie-in-the-sky dream. It is something that we can actually work towards, we know, because we have done it before. Working with clients, we know that given the right intervention, not just one size fits all, given the right intervention, they can find housing. Our specific mission is to provide that individual life service for neighbors experiencing homelessness who are motivated to change regardless of barriers so they can make a home and become their best self. I'm right now, in honor of Martin Luther King Day, I'm rereading his book, Where We Go From Here: Chaos or Community? And one of the things that he says in Chaos or Community is, you don't find a happy life, you make one. At Hope Center, we're going to have the opportunity to help clients assemble the tools to be able to make that happy life, and we're going to be able to do it right here in the city of Clear Lake. Here's our timeline.
Actually, I just want to go back here one second and talk a little bit about this number, Lake County's homeless population, and really point out to you this number, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy. That is the population of Kelseyville. We have the population of Kelseyville in Lake County that's currently doesn't have a place to live. So I just wanted to add something. And of course, you can see our neighboring counties and our U.S. average. So currently, as you know, we have purchased Hope Center. We've secured our architectural services. We've assessed our feasibility study. We've gone back and forth over our feasibility study because initially, we were like, this can't be right. Let's, let's kick it back. I think we did that a couple of times, to be honest with you. Then once we took a good, hard look in the mirror and realized this is, this is the world we're living in today, we've moved on. We've completed our design process and plans. We submitted our plans to the city for approval, and now we're currently in the process of accepting bids. We've got two underway, and we've got another one coming on Monday to do a walkthrough of the facility. From there, once Hope Center is open, we'll be working with the management of the partnership here.
Yeah, sure. Once Hope Center is open, we are particularly excited by how many partners have already committed to coming alongside us in this process of providing the innovative case management and one-on-one work with our clients. So Lake County Behavioral Health, Department of Social Services, North Coast Opportunities, Adventist Health, Redwood Community Services. These partners are already working together to create the collaboration and warm hand-off referrals that are necessary. We're already doing that work. In fact, because we're already doing that work, it was announced this week that Hope Rising and Project Restoration have been invited to present at Housing California this year. That is the largest housing and homelessness conference in the country, and this year, we will be presenting and representing the county of Lake. Our partners know what they are doing. They just haven't had the right tools. But this is the moment, and we are able to accomplish it now because of the new ways that we are collaborating and working with our partners. The city of Clear Lake is one of the most important partners at this exact moment because this is the place where the poverty is the deepest. This is the place where you can see it without even scratching the surface, that it is here. So when we solve it here, when we become the vision of Hope here, it will translate into communities across the state, in fact, across the nation. We can do it. But it has to be done now, without any more waiting. And we are short funding in order to go forward to get the work completed. This is, are we, I was going to go to the four plan. Do you want to talk about the findings first?
It's up to you. Four plan?
Yeah. Well, the reason I want, the reason I wanted to go to the four plan, and I was sort of thinking this in my head, is because it's a map to understand how we're providing these services. There's a section that is a female dorm, there's a section that is the male dorm. There's an area for common living space, because one of the things that we have learned through Project Restoration, our pilot project with Adventist Health, is that building and developing community within the client base develops job skills. It develops the skills that they need to take them outside of the house, outside of the transitional shelter, and to leverage that into truly transforming their lives. That sense of community is incredibly important. So in creating that common space, it has raised some of the cost of the remodeling, but it is important because it's what's going to help us see that long-term benefit.
I also want to point out that in the floor plan of Hope Center, there'll be a cooldown room. So oftentimes, there's an opportunity for law enforcement or any foreign EMT to take a patient to the ER or the ED where that patient has to sit and cool down. Well, instead of taking our precious first responder's time, as well as our hospital's time, and taking up a bed where a patient who needs the care could be seen, they can come to Hope Center and cool down in a safe place and be released the next morning or at an appropriate time. There's also two office spaces in here for Lake County Behavioral Health. They're not just going to be coming in and out when we call them thirteen times to get here. There will be two staff housed at Hope Center. It's one of the things that we believe and know that this is the beauty of Hope Center. It's not just a place where we're going to be housing our traditionally housed folks, but it's a place where we can meet their needs to help them become their best self. So where we currently are right now, we are in need of a million dollars to get Hope Center open. There's an opportunity for additional funding that we're looking at for one-point-five million in June, which we feel strongly that we can acquire. However, we have to show proof that our doors are open and that we're doing the work to be applicable for this round of funding. And we're almost there. And the only thing that's stopping us is, is this funding that will make this happen. The only thing we can get somebody from the continuum of care, but we really are asking that the city join us and make a stake in the ground with us and say, we're going to do this, and we're going to see this through, and this will be something that Clear Lake can be proud of. So that's all I really have.
Thank you.
Questions?
Let's see if some other people want to tell something that might come back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to comment on this project? Please come up and state your name.
I'm Monte Blumenthal. I'm working on another project in the county. But I have to say that these people know what they're doing. I have read the statistics. My background is in public health and as a clinician, as both a nurse and a therapist. So I can tell you from having worked with lots and lots of clients who homelessness and addiction, post-incarceration, all the things that we see here, they respond very well to the model that Hope Rising has given you. And I suggest that you offer part, at least part of that money to show your faith in this to help turn our city around.
Thank you, thank you. Any more public comment? Ms. Strombo? Again, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Strombo. I'm the Vice President of Community Integration for Adventist Health System. I know most of you because I began here in Clear Lake, and I still live in Lake County. I go over to Roseville all week long, but I'm still very passionate about the work here and in my role. I have the opportunity to provide resources and support to the local communities where an Adventist hospital exists. I think an important analogy, while it seems like a rabbit trail, is something like this. There's a financial planner that I think most of us are aware of, and he does financial education and training for individuals. And he says, if you have a big challenge financially, personally, and you need to solve it, you do not send five dollars a month equally to all of your creditors. What you do is you put all of your resources together and you solve that big problem. And when that credit card bill is paid off, you put all your resources together and you solve the next problem. I think the challenges in a community like Lake County, when we dilute our impact because we, we all spread ourselves so thin across a lot of different priority levels. So I do think this is an opportunity for Clear Lake, the city of Clear Lake, Adventist Health Partnership Health Plan, the Hope Rising Partners, to say, today, this is our priority, and we're going to put our emphasis and our support behind that priority. We're going to solve this, and then together, we'll move on to the next priority. So, you know, Adventist Health is committed to providing a significant percentage of our total operating revenue to support projects like this. And I will tell you that this work is really being heralded as a model for the state of how to solve these problems in rural communities. And it's because of the relationships and the collaboration that everyone's really to work together. I think too, as a city, you can look at the fact that the work that this is providing, along with the work of the intensive case management of Project Restoration or other work, really does provide almost an arm of support to your law enforcement. It's, it's a resource that they can reach out to, to offload some of the work that they're doing, to have a, a solution for a challenge for some of these most challenging individuals. So it's really working in partnership. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for the work that you continue to do, and I'm very proud to still work with Lake County and still still live in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I think we can close the floor again. Would you like to? Would you like to...
It's not a very...
It's not a very... You can just break that back. Any other councilman has some questions on the presenters of you? I have a couple, but... Councilman Perdott, please. You have your...
Thanks. One of the things that I wanted to maybe give some insight to, and maybe I could call on Pastor Shannon to speak to this, is I think that there's a misconception of what a typical homeless person might look like. And I think that through the testimonies that I've heard, there's a wide variety of things and influences in our county that have caused people to become homeless. And I know that there are... That Pastor Shannon can share a couple of those testimonies. And I think it would be better for her to share those, maybe than to hear from me. So if you don't mind.
You know, one of the pieces of the intervention for our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness, one of those pieces that is already in place is the shower trailer. One of the clients who came to take a shower a few weeks ago, she arrived with her five children. And as she was trying to figure out how she could like fit five children in one shower, our shower team, our pop-up care team said, we'll help you. We'll watch the kids and you know, you can kind of rotate them through. And through this process of rotating the kids in and out, we asked her, why, what brought you here? Why are you here? And she said, well, my husband was the sole breadwinner for our family. He was in an auto accident. They flew him to UCSF and we lost our housing. He's still in the hospital and we're living in our car. That is one path to homelessness here. I picked that story because she's from Clear Lake. But there are others. We know that one of the clients that graduated just six months ago from Project Restoration, his father used to sit on the city council many years ago. There are people that come to homelessness through illness. There are people who come to homelessness through fire and through flood. And yes, there are people that come to homelessness through addiction to alcohol or to drugs. I won't ask for a show of hands for how many of you drink, but I will say that I bet it's majority and you're housed. So what causes homelessness by itself is not drinking, is not alcohol, is not those substances. It is not having the right other supports, whether it is a living wage, as in the case of this one family who lost everything, or if it is a health crisis. Homelessness comes in many different, many different packages. It's one of the reasons that we try to say our neighbor is experiencing homelessness instead of homeless is if they were one kind of people. Another one of our clients became homeless when they had a mental health issue. We see that a lot. But many of our people who are clients, our friends who are experiencing homelessness, they get those mental health diagnoses after they've been living on the street for six months or a year or chronically. How could you stay sane and live through that day after day, week after week, month after month without hope? We had one woman in Clear Lake who was driving by Hope Center two weeks ago while we were sitting in a meeting, trying to figure out why we weren't open yet. What can we do to push this forward? What was so astonishing about this woman was that she had come to Hope Center the night before and she had vandalized the sign. She wrote a big N where the H had stood so that it said, "Nope, center." But that morning, she appeared on the door of Hope Center and she said, "I cannot live with myself. I'm not this kind of person. I have to make it right." And I said, "Okay, what do you want to do?" And she said, "I want to try to clean it up first." And I said, "Okay, well, that's what I was going to do today was to try to clean up the paint." And she had brought with her all of the supplies to clean it. She brought with her the cleaner, the rags, everything. She spent the next 45 minutes outside while we talked about Hope Center cleaning it up. She knocked back on the door and I said, "Come in and tell me what happened. Are you housed?" And she said, "No, I'm living in my car." And as I was driving by last night, I couldn't stand that word, "hope," speaking to me when there isn't any yet. There is no hope. Where am I supposed to find hope? And I was so overwhelmed, she said. I went and bought paint to change it, to say, "Nope," because that's how I feel. But over the course of the conversation, we talked about hope and what Hope Center will provide. And she left herself feeling more hope, a need feeling more inspired about the necessity of moving this work forward faster.
Thank you. Councilwoman Overton.
Okay. Me or for Allison?
No, I don't know who might want to answer this or if either one of you guys can answer this because my hope is to start off with one, I kind of disagree that, I'm going to say 98% of our people that are homeless have drug, alcohol problems, whether it's from being depressed or not, wherever. We cannot cure this stuff until we have a detox center. So to me, this is really great. We want to take them off the streets, but taking them in here is not, without going through detoxing, because you know, as well as I know, the huge majority of these homelessness are either on alcohol or drugs. We have no detox center here in Lake County at all. And until that happens, I just don't think that these projects are going to be as successful as what you think they are going to be. We need a detox center. And this is a great option. I love the house idea and everything, but I think that we need to start, like you said, cure the first problem. The first problem is getting them cleanest sober. You can't do anything with anybody without having them cleanest sober. They can't move forward with their lives. So it's great to house them, but if you can't move forward and there's no detox center here to move them forward, I've been dealing with this with many people lately on trying to give them help for their drug and alcohol abuses. And let me tell you, it's a nightmare. Lake County doesn't have contracts with other places in other counties. There's no place for these people to go. And I'm going to tell you, that's why a lot of them are still on the streets. It's not that they can't have housing, it's because of the drugs and alcohol that people won't let them stay in those houses.
Yeah, so I don't disagree with you that a majority of people who are experiencing homelessness do have mental health, drug and alcohol addictions, and it becomes greater. The barriers to overcoming those addictions is greater living on the street. I will also say that there's no purpose in sending somebody to do the work, the difficult work of detoxing and recovery when in three months, they're going to be back out on the street because they will be using right away. What we have discovered is that often, what we are able to achieve, partly because one of our partners is Lake County Behavioral Health, when they come into our program, they may not be housed with us immediately. We may be able to get them into a drug or recovery program before they come to us. That is one piece of this puzzle and one reason why Lake County Behavioral Health will have an office in the building, not just referring them out. So another part of the work that Lake County Behavioral Health is doing right now is to create that detox center so that there is a place for detox. One of the emphases that I've tried to share today is that there is no one right solution. It is a continuum of solutions. And one piece of the puzzle is without question, having a detox facility. But if you have someone do that hard work of detox and they're back out on the street, which is their current reality, because that is not the actual cause of their homelessness in many cases, then we have achieved nothing except for one more cycle of recidivism. So I don't disagree that that's a necessary and important piece choice. I 100% agree with you. And we need places like Hope Center.
Because nobody can go into drug rehab without being clean. Don't ask me why that is. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life, that you've got to be clean to go into rehab. That's why they're going is because they want help. You know, my thing here is that there needs to be a 24-hour place for somebody to go when they want to get clean because they can't. I'm going to tell you, I deal with homeless all the time, constantly. And I'm going to say the hugest percent, I'd almost say 100% of them are from drugs and alcohol. And they may have started off some daytime for some mental thing, but drug and alcohol. You have to get them clean. Are you telling me you're going to take drugs and alcohol into these places and then what are you going to do with them? Because the minute you take a man, if you don't want to bring their drugs in with them, they're on detox time. And that becomes a nightmare. They're sick, they're throwing up, there is a mass. They could be violent. But what are you going to do with that situation? And I don't think you're going to take those type of people in, which means that you're pretty much putting your shelter down to very few people in our area, you know, so...
I don't know. What I can tell you is that at Project Restoration, we have 10 beds and we always have a waiting list and nobody comes in unless they're sober, clean and sober at that time and ready to commit to long-term care. So in my experience, already for two years, running a transitional house upon which Hope Center is based, I can tell you, it doesn't work for 100% of the people. I'm not trying to sell you a bill of goods, but it works for a majority. And so as we look at those numbers of people that are coming in that are motivated to change, I don't want for us to resist helping them because we think that a majority aren't ready, because there are enough that are ready for that change, given the right tools, circumstances and supports, they will change.
So and how many is this house supposed to house?
20.
20? And how big are the rooms?
I'd say 200 square feet possibly.
So is there two, three people in each room?
Up to two.
Okay. And so personally, I'd like to see more financial stuff on this and the process that you guys, what you've done to get to here, you know, because I have no paperwork to tell me amounts out of your slideshow, which I appreciate that. So I mean, I, let's see, you know, so I would like to look at a little more paperwork on what the steps have been and the financial situations and where you've spent the money at. So I mean, you've had 1.3 million, where has that money went to? So I mean, financial stuff, I think I'd like to have.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to speak to that real quick. So we were awarded 1.3 million by Partnership Health Plan and we used $500,000 to purchase the building and we currently have $500,000 sitting waiting for remodel. $300,000 is going towards the operation of Hope Center because we want to make sure that once the doors are open, that we stay open. And so that's earmarked for the operational pieces. But I'd be happy to...
Well, yeah, I think, I'm going to say, just, I'm not going to speak for everybody else, but for me, to be able to give you $500,000, I'm going to hole in a whole lot more paperwork and writing and what's been spent, where it's been spent and what's the plan and, you know, how the budget and, you know, all of that stuff.
That budget.
Yeah, so...
Councilman Harris?
Of the 20 occupants, how much time do you anticipate each occupant spending in their home?
So that's a great question. Basically, everybody's different, right? So what might take one person two weeks to figure it out, to get their situation in order, or three months, might take another a year. So we don't have a three months, 90 days turnover rate. We're going to take this pay, you know, occupant by occupant. Basically, I'm sure you can probably answer this.
Yeah, what I would add to that is that the legal definition of transitional housing is six months to two years. And while that is true, I will say that at Restoration House, we've seen two days to two years. Well, we haven't actually had anyone two years, but a year and a half. The key is regardless of how long they're going to stay, that you start talking about transitioning out at day number one. Everything that you do is geared toward where they're going to be going. And so it will vary radically. At Restoration House, the average is six months.
I can just anticipate somebody coming from the streets into the home, providing them a sense of security and stability, and that would probably be very difficult to give up once they've established that sense of security. You had mentioned that you have 300,000 earmarked for the operation of the facility. Approximately, how long does that 300,000 carry you as far as the staffing and that sort of thing?
It'll carry us a year.
One year. And what's your anticipation for receiving funding from the one-year point on?
Yeah, so we have partners who are willing to purchase beds to help with our operational pieces, so Behavioral Health is willing to purchase beds. We've got other partners who want to come in and support us in that way. And there's also a plethora of grant funding that we can go after once Hope Center is open.
But the 300,000, I assume is for the weight, operating costs, electrical, that sort of thing?
Staff.
Staff.
Everything.
Okay, so one year, so 12 months, that's the drop dead point unless you've established a new funding source.
Yeah, but we're already establishing the funding sources for years two and three through our partners. So that's something we're clearly...
So that's a bonus. Okay. And when you go to break, if you receive funding, you go to break ground on the project, I assume you're already getting bids for the work to be performed. Would the contractors that you choose and the source for your materials all be local?
The contractors we're currently working with are all local, yeah.
And the materials that would be sourced for the renovation work would be local?
I'm working on it now. I'm working, trying to get ahold of Kelseyville Lever to see if they would give us some sort of form an agreement because they've helped so much with the fires and the rebuild process. So that would be ideal, but again, you know, we have to work with the contractor and if they can find a cheaper rate elsewhere, we're kind of stuck on...
Understandable. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
If we're looking at taking city funding, it's always nice to know that the funding's going back to the city in some way or another.
It's three local contractors.
I understand what you're saying.
Not subcontractors, but three local contractors, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Perdott?
Well, again, I just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight and making the presentation. I also wanted to kind of address some of the questions that Councilmember Overton had raised. And there's several models that exist that are showing significant progress in a housing-first model. And that, the work that's being done outside of the state of California, I think is relevant. Our Senator Mike McGuire has looked into some of these things and it's been instrumental, I think, in some of his work and some of the legislation he's passed in Sacramento, to see that these housing-first models are funded. And some of that money has even seen the light of day coming into Lake County through our continuum of care and the projects that are funded through that, which is one of the items that are mentioned on the particular site that we're looking at so and board. So there are other funding sources that we're looking for. The other thing that I'd like to say is, when I made this request, I was looking at what we could do to invest in our community. That using this money, which is bond money, it's not dedicated to roads, it's not dedicated to cops, it's not dedicated to other funding sources, it's for housing and it's for the, this bond money is for helping people get into housing or help them improve the housing they already have. Correct me if I'm wrong, city manager. That's just my high-level, you know, 30,000-foot description of it. The other thing that we've seen through Project Restoration and Restoration House is the number of dollars saved, not necessarily just at the ED at Adventist Health, not necessarily in the day-to-day of what impacts folks may have who are experiencing homelessness on our community. But we were able to realize significant dollars saved through law enforcement, through time spent helping folks that are homeless when they're housed. They're not a burden on those police officers who now can take those Berkeley reports, can stop those traffic violators and make our city a safer city. And that's proven out more and more. So when I made this request, I was looking at us, the city of Clear Lake, and as a longtime resident of the city of Clear Lake, investing in ourselves. And I think that the payoff will be significant. So that's why I made this request.
Councilwoman Overton?
So as a Restoration House, you have to be referred, you have to go through this big hole thing to even get in here, which is unsurprised anybody can do that. How's this going to work for somebody to get into this house?
Yeah, it will depend on the person. However, the intent is for Hope Center to be a low-barrier transitional housing project as opposed to Restoration House, which is a specifically high barrier. Somebody has to have complex medical issues that can be stabilized in order to get into Restoration House. Hope Center is not going to have that requirement. They can be referred from any partner or they could self-refer. If there is an open bed, somebody who walks into Hope Center can go through the intake process to see if they are appropriate for group living. Do we have a setting available? Are they motivated? You may have, I mentioned earlier that one piece of it is that they have to be motivated to change. So we use several different processes that will be part of that, ascertaining who is ready to be in, but it's not one door. It's any of those processes. Also, Lake County has not been compliant in terms of using the homeless management information system, but we are getting there. And so there is... And so, there is a process through HMIS, which is coordinated entry. So, anybody could go to any of the agencies that are receiving homeless federal dollars, and the computer doing the assessment will come up and say, oh, this is a person who should be prioritized for Hope Center. So, any of those ways, walking in off the street, referred from the partner, going through coordinated entry in the COC.
Essentially, no wrong door, which is excellent. And this will be Lake County's first transitional housing unit, sorry.
Yeah, no, because that's one of the problems is, is everybody's always got to be referred to everything and, you know, it just doesn't always work. Let's say they have an appointment, someplace they don't get a bus to get there, it's raining, this is that, there's just things that stand in their way, along with, like I said, addicts, you know, whatever it is, or mental issues that just, functionally, sometimes they just can't get on a bus because of their mental condition. So, that was one of the things that made them, I'm saying the Restoration House is wonderful, but one of the problems is, is getting into it, so, is making that happen. And I don't want to just open up another place where that's what's going to be the problem, is they're going to have to be referred. If they have to be referred, then it's not helping everybody.
Okay, has this council... Want more comments?
No matter how much you try, you can't send that mental telepathy so they know what you want them to say, right? So, to answer one of your questions, Councilmember Overton, we have worked, Pastor Shannon has worked with people with addiction issues to find them bed space in other out-of-county because we recognize the fact that we are very challenged here in Lake County to find that bed space. So, when they do present themselves, and we have people who Chief White would be able to make recommendations for someone to be housed at Restoration House, obviously, Hope Center wants the doors open. Our Fire EMS are also one of our partners, and they've been very helpful in trying to minimize and mitigate other problems that cause people to be high utilizers. I mean, like putting a light bulb in so somebody doesn't trip and fall. They've been fantastic, they're doing great work. But what I'm trying to get to is, there are 16 domains of care that we are looking at for each individual person, and those would also be applied here at Hope Center. So, whether we have a detox here in Lake County, or we might be good at Sino County, Sonoma County, wherever that may exist, the work that will be done will get them there. But again, the housing-first model seems to be the best and most successful statistically.
I will add to that, that of the clients that we have had at Restoration House, 10% of them, I actually don't have this on a slide anywhere, but just knowing the number's off my head, 10% of them, we have gotten into detox facilities in other places by promising that we would take them at Restoration House when they graduate from that program. So, the fact that they have to be ready to be sober when they come into the house is not necessarily a barrier to getting in. And the fact that Restoration House in particular has a high barrier, complex medical issues, doesn't mean that it doesn't help everybody. The entire community is helped when we are reducing that utilization. But coming back to it, there's no one silver bullet solution. We need all of these interventions. We need a low-barrier transitional housing shelter as Hope Center. We need a complex medical that can be addressing it. We need warming centers. We need affordable housing. We need tiny villages. The point is that we need all of them. And one of the commitments of the COC in particular, right now, the continuum of care for the homeless, is to be looking at what interventions are missing within the county of Lake. And as Russ is mentioning, housing-first is the current accepted model federally, the best measured model that is receiving the most federal dollars. So, what we really want to focus on is getting ourselves ready to be housing people.
Okay. I have a couple of questions that many of you have consulted. How many people, I know Restoration House has some statistics on how much it saves the community for different departments. Can you tell more about that?
Yeah, I of course don't have Project Restoration numbers in front of me, but what I can say loosely is that it's $1.4 million for 40 of our, excuse me, 24 of our clients. We've had 54, 24 of them that we have measured because we have an entire year of data before intervention, an entire year of data after intervention, and the joint services, paramedic, clear, police, sheriff's department, jail, hospital, for those 24 for whom we have the full year data, it's $1.4 million savings.
And how many patients, I'm not going to call patients at this point, do you think you'd be able to serve at this Hope Center, and how much would it save all these departments?
It's very hard to put an estimate on how much people save without getting, without starting, to be honest with you, because this is going to be different, they're going to be high in medical needs, they're going to be in lower barrier. So, part of our agreement with Partnership Health Plan is that we won't be tracking this. So, we will be able to give you a number after, you know, even a short period of time to say, this is how much money this is savings. And it will save money for our community.
There it is. I've done some research, and I think there's one country in this world that just declared that they have no homeless people around Finland. And they use the housing-first model, they've been using that for some period of time, and they've essentially eradicated homelessness.
They are using the housing-first model and a breadth across the continuum of interventions. Finland, for example, also uses night buses. It is not all, I mean, housing-first is the primary accepted way, but not everybody fits that model. But it was just this year that they declared an end to homeless, effective end to homelessness, so that is exciting.
All right, questions?
If I might answer your question about the data that you're asking about? The accepted research nationally indicates that intensive case management programs reduce community utilization by an average of 30%. So, if you take all of these programs across the United States and average them, it's an average 30% savings on the costs that are happening. So, if you looked, you know, if you quantified every police encounter, every emergency transport, every 911 call, every emergency room visit, and every day in a hospital for this population, you would reduce that cost by an average of 30%. And also, the data that Pastor Shannon shared around the $1.4 million in savings, just in case there was a concern that that was sort of a stack of the napkin, that data has just been published in peer-reviewed articles, JIP and STAT, which are nationwide top medical journals. So, it's been completely peer-reviewed, they looked at every single case and verified that that cost savings and that the patient outcomes that were achieved were true and accurate. So, just wanted to add that for your questions about data.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we'll move back to counsel. If we have any questions, we'll...
Can I ask a couple, Vice Mayor? Could I ask a couple questions? One is, will there be any preference given to folks who are from the Clear Lake area?
Great question.
I think it will be easier for folks who are from the Clear Lake area to be part of Hope Center. And one of the reasons I think that you will see that most people will be from the city of Clear Lake is because people who are experiencing homelessness are the same as people who are housed. They have a particular city that they consider home around the lake, and they stay in that city unless there is an extraordinary reason that calls them out. We found housing for one of the clients at the warming center this week in Clear Lake, and he refused to go because Lakeport is home. He would rather be homeless in Lakeport than housed in Clear Lake. So, my, I can't give you data, of course, because we're not open yet, but my gut tells me that a majority of the clients at Hope Center are going to be from Clear Lake.
Can you touch on the story of the prostitution, two blocks down?
Yes. So, Malcolm Gladwell is one of, is a national expert on social theory and change, and what he has been looking at lately is, in his latest research, are what numbers show about location preference? In Kansas City, they did a study about prostitution on one block. In that one block, the city of Kansas City said, we are going to end prostitution here. And other people in the city said, it's never going to happen. And the Kansas City Police said, we are going to have 10 officers walk in this beat, and people in the community said, they're just going to move the prostitution a block over where it is safer. But in fact, what happened was it stayed right there. The prostitution lowered, the rates of prostitution lowered only while that continued intervention happened, and it did not move anywhere else. So, the social researchers came in and spoke with the prostitutes. Why did you not just move one block over? Why didn't you just go to a place where you could safely ply your trade? And time after time, what they heard was that that wasn't home. Those aren't our people. This block is home. These are our people. We don't know what's going to happen to us if we go over there. And the people that are experiencing homelessness are very much in that same way. This is home.
Anything more?
Yeah, so, looking at the numbers, as Councilmember Perdok had requested, the city council consider up to a half a million dollars of funding, so you have a million dollars is needed. Do you have other contingencies or sources for the remaining funds?
We do, but if the city of Clear Lake would like to be our champion in this and say, you know, we're not going to, we don't want you to wait, let's do this, I would, I'd like to ask, I know Mr. Perdok was recommending $500,000, but I would like to question if a million dollars is something the city can do, like if they can pioneer this way. And so, I'd be happy to show you where the money's currently gone to.
I mean, my understanding was that behavioral health had some funding that would be available. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, I don't have any hard dollars on that, other than helping with the sustainability of Hope Center. You know, we have, we're, next, our next Thursday's continuum of care meeting, we'll be discussing if Hope Center will receive, you know, anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000. Obviously, that's going to help and that's going to take us a huge way. We wouldn't need a million dollars if that, when that comes through, but...
And then, my last question is just if, say, the city council decided to provide, you know, half a million dollars to the project, you couldn't find another source of the funding, how would that impact the phasing in or the plan?
Yeah, it would impact time. It would be one more night, one more month of our neighbors continuing to be on the streets.
So, you would not do any work? You would wait until you were able to receive the million dollars?
So, our, thank you for that. We're taking bids now to open up Hope Center in phases because we've recognized that we can't wait any longer, and with the money that we currently have now. So, that's why we've started opening up bids with our local contractors, because we, if we have to get Hope Center open in phases to meet the needs of our community, we're going to do it. So, that is a part of our process.
Okay, thank you. So basically, as you said, if we fund some part of it, maybe other people come forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, do we have any consensus here on the council, what we want to do with this?
I have some information I can give you on what funding options are available.
Okay, that'll be good, thank you.
So, what Councilmember Perdok mentioned was our Series B bond fund. So, these were bonds that were issued by the former redevelopment agency of the city. There were two sets of bonds, one for infrastructure and other things, and the Series B was for low and moderate income housing. So, there's a pretty flexible use of the funds at this point because of the dissolution of redevelopment, but we do have a little over $2 million that could be used for a project like this. I would add that I have several other projects in mind that have not yet brought to council for use of some of those funds, but would expect to bring forward at some point over the next year. The second possible option, which, so those funds are available and with council action could be distributed for a project. The second option is, there's some CVG disaster recovery funding that has been allocated to our zip code based on the disasters that happened in 2017. And so, there was a big block of funding, but there were several zip codes that were identified as high priority, and so there were specific allocations given to various jurisdictions. Our zip code has been allocated a little bit over 1.1 million. Now, it's taken housing and community development a little over 18 months just to develop the program guidelines for this. There's a letter of interest that's due to them next week, which I have intended to submit, that these funds have to be used for some type of multi-family housing project within the zip code, preference being given to those that, those projects that house folks that were displaced by wildfires. So, I'm not 100% sure if this project would be compatible with that. I believe that it's the best project opportunity that we have available for that funding currently. Of course, the negative, I'm sure from the folks wanting to open Hope Center is that, you know, it may be a year or so before that funding would be available to be put to use. So, but that's kind of the options that I see right now.
Thank you, Mr. Port. Do we have any consensus from council here to vote this last year?
Well, I'd kind of like to table it until maybe the end of next month so I can sit down with them and get, I personally want some more financial information and a little more clarity of their strategic planning and how this is all going to work than to just, you know, to make a decision today.
No, I don't think, today is giving direction to staff.
So, I just, I want more information, so that's...
So, it sounds like we want to kind of proceed, but we want some additional financial information from Hope Center, how they operate.
So, as far as process, I mean, we wouldn't be able to, the council isn't, wouldn't be able to authorize this. Issue a check. So, the plan was to get this presentation, have the council give some direction to us. Our mid-year budget report is planned for February 20th, and so if there was direction, at that time, I had kind of thought there was direction that we would include a budget amendment in that action of the council to include whatever direction you want. But it could be at any other future time as well, if you...
Any more comments? Let's see, Councilmember Harris.
Just a question on just the general terms of this. No, thank you, I've been off this whole time. Just a general question on the terms of this. If we were to be the champion contributor to this, I'm assuming we would, we would maintain some sort of fractional ownership of the real property? I think that there would be some kind of a consideration there. I'm not sure how that would play out, but I think it's worth at least asking the question. The reason I ask this question is because, let's say we contributed to this scenario, I'm not saying this is going to be the way, I'm just saying that just possibly, we contribute to this, we get the renovation done, everything looks great, but for whatever reason, you can't secure another funding source, and after a year's time, it reaches a dissolution state, and at which time, it just becomes the asset of Adventist Health, I assume. So, what I'm wondering is, what kind of a security do we have in not having any kind of name on the deed, for example?
I think the council could add any restrictions that they would like, that's here, correct, that the property is owned by Adventist Health. There's no real, the only parameters for the use of the Series B funding is it has to be spent on low and moderate income housing. And even that specific definition can be established by the council.
If I, can I approach the podium? In regards to your question, I don't know about you guys, but I'm not sure that Clear Lake wants to own another piece of property, but I'm just going to have that up there. So, Adventist Health has signed a memorandum of understanding with Partnership Health Plan for Hope Center, guaranteeing that once it is opened, it will be operated as a transitional housing unit regardless of where the money comes from for at least 15 years. So, Adventist Health has really come forward to back this project to make sure that no matter what happens, this can't fall through the cracks, it's not going to be turned into something else, it's going to serve our community. So, I mean, I'd be happy to work with you guys on some, anything that would be needed in order to secure additional funding for this, but I just thought I'd present that to you.
And that would be one of the pieces of paper that you need to send with this, to get the information.
Be happy to.
Okay. City Manager, do you have enough direction here?
Well, I don't have very much direction, other than Councilmember Overton wants more information, so I don't know if the rest of you want additional information on the project. project.
It looks like we have another comment, double comment. Supervisor might have some, I understand.
I want to apologize for coming in late. Bruno Sabate said here at Clear Lake, this is the kind of projects we need to see in the county. In fact, I think this is the kind of project that should be approached also for the county to see what kind of funding...
I was going to hit you up next.
What kind of funding do we have? I just spoke last week after having conversations about looking at other types of projects, explaining what Project Restoration is already doing to our community, the fact that Hope Center is already in the works of happening, I was speaking with Senator Maguire. I haven't received an email from him yet, but there is a lot of funding that is about to open up, and some of that funding is going to go directly to Behavioral Health, some of that's going to go directly to the Continuum of Care, but there will be more funding. I'm asking you, please bring this problem, sorry, I'm asking you, please, bring this project to the county. I know our general fund's not going to be able to handle that, but there are funds directly given to the county for projects like this. Let's see what we can do. I think this needs to be a partnership, whether it's only for the citizens of Clear Lake, or the residents of Clear Lake, or surrounding area. Behavioral Health serves the city of Clear Lake, and this would be a great opportunity as well to make sure that we get these types of facilities up and running. So I would say the money will be there, even though maybe it's not there now, that our Governor Newsom, his plan is opening vast amount of money, $650 million right now, just got released for these types of programs. So let's work together, and let's bring this to the county and have that conversation. I can't make any promises, because I know our general fund won't be there, but I think that we will be seeing some money coming through directly to the exact services that are needed here. The type of, the people that we're trying to help, they have to find the stability in order for that help to work. Without that stability, without the facility, then the help that we offer is just a treadmill that goes... I just wanted to offer that, because I think it's an important conversation to not have you know, that unilaterally, it needs to go to the county as well.
Thank you.
If the county was to have a tax sale, it would be general fund dollars to support that project.
All right.
I almost failed to mention, though, or forgot what I said. I did talk to Mayor Kramer earlier today, he's in Sacramento, so he couldn't be here tonight, but he asked that I share his preference with you, would be that the council would consider funding up to a half a million dollars if there was another agency that would provide matching funds to that, so.
I think I'm at the same consideration as this mayor. I'd like to see this project up and started. It's winter time, this is the hardest time, and I'd like to see it. It was supposed to open November, I forget when it was supposed to open, but this is sorely needed. We need to do something, we can't just fiddle around. We need to spend, we have the money for it, whether, we need to find financials and all that, I'm all for that, but my, my suggestion is, let's get this thing on the agenda and get it moving forward, because we need to, we need to do this. This is a social issue that needs to be addressed, and it needs to address, it needs to be addressed now. Thank you. Any other comments? So now that you have enough direction now, or, I think it's, it's like, oh.
I put my phone up.
Okay, Councilman Perdok has made one more.
Well, I just want to say that I agree with you, Councilmember Overton, and we need to be physically responsible with any monies that come into the city or the county, and we need to be good stewards of that. Again, are we investing wisely that money? And as Mr. Flora pointed out, and I was aware, we're looking at that more money in excess of $2 million, but it's sitting in the county, we're not investing it. And that's why I said this be brought forward. So I couldn't agree more, we need to show the numbers, and we have that. But I'd also would like to move this forward, because time has been wasted, and too much has passed, and we've got people that are living under bushes and squatting in homes, and we need to remedy that as soon as possible. Thank you.
So I think the direction is from council, is finances on the project, strategic plan, and I agree with Major Kramer to go up to half a million dollars.
So is there other consensus on the council for the half a million dollar number with matching funds, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so I'll do any work, if I can be of assistance, working with you to, and Councilmember Overton, to provide information, but we'll, I guess, prepare through the major budget process to allocate half a million dollars, and then you'll have another chance at that time, you could make an amendment or decide not to do it.
Okay. Councilman Harris.
You're right, we don't want to own it, that's kind of why I brought that up. But I would say that I would like Burbage with the agreement, that reads that if this facility was used for anything other than what the purpose is in the next 15 years, that there would be a prorational return of investment to the city of Clear Lake.
All right. We're done with this. I thank you for your presentation. Thank you. City manager, report.
Just a couple of items. So I wanted to give you update on the tax default sale process, so I guess it was two weeks ago, Board of Supervisors had a discussion, maybe it was just last week, but anyways, had a discussion from the ad hoc committee about response to the city of Clear Lake's letter that was sent to them. I was there, Mayor Kramer and Vice Mayor Slugan were also there. I would say that it was particularly frustrating, I felt like there's very little seriousness being given to this issue by the Board of Supervisors. There were really no comments from the tax collector about the issue, and I don't feel like currently the county has an adequate plan to deal with this issue. We were promised at least 300 properties we could put up for auction in March, now they're saying it's going to be more like 240 properties put up for sale hopefully in May. And, you know, so it's just, it's just the same thing that's happened for years. On a, on a couple of positive notes related to this, I had let you know before, and I'm sure you all received the letter from the Lake County Civil Grand Jury, that they had issued a report a few years ago related to this, and felt that that was adequate. A little additional correspondence with them, they agreed to receive additional information that we may have, and consider whether to do another investigation, and so Mayor Kramer and myself will be meeting within the next week to provide then a little more detail on the situation. And then, I, you know, as you recall, we sent letters to a number of state agencies who may have some oversight over the tax collector. We did receive an inquiry, and I had a couple of conversations with someone from the Oddest Division of the State Controller's Office, they are actively looking at this case, have pulled a number of state records related to tax sales that Lake County has had, and are in the determination phase of whether to open an official investigation into the tax collector, so I believe that's good news. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that we did receive permit application today for a number of projects on the property here, Carl's Jr., so the first phase of the project would be drive-through Starbucks, and then there will be an additional retail building with a couple of tenants behind that, so we're looking forward to moving that project forward as soon as we can. And that's my opinion.
Councilman Overton?
Hi, I'm...
Okay, Councilman Harris, your report, sir. Perdok?
I've attended a meeting since we last met, but I would like to remind everyone that on January 27, 2020, we will begin once more our annual pick count, our point in time count. We are asking that anyone who may see this broadcast, or if you have friends who are currently in shelter, living out in our neighborhoods, that you would let them know that we are going to be continuing, doing this count on the 27th, and that if they can come and participate, they would be available to receive some food, flu shots if they need it, any testing and other medical needs that they might have could be checked. So again, we're looking forward to getting some good accurate numbers, and looking forward with our volunteers to get that work done. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I attended the lab meeting, and there was some conversations about the contract with our district, and to see how they're performing. Other ones, I just attended, came back today, the California Council, California City, California City?
Eagle City.
Eagle City, sorry. Had some interesting information, and even one of the financial experts of the thing knew about our tax default problem, and he... No, it's good, it's good, because I think we need to continue to bring this to the forefront. We need to continue to show what the problem is, because in my opinion, the tax default properties are most likely, or I'm pretty sure, are also abandoned and not taken care of, because if you don't pay your taxes, why should, why should you take care of it? So I think it creates blight, and it creates all kinds of problems for all our, for our city, and it looks, you know, that deal, it's just a bad deal. So we need to keep the pressure on to keep the county and the tax collector accountable for this. And that's it. Thank you. No other? I have it. Dr. at 7:22.